Yes, great. Thank you.
Hello. Forgot to bring my agenda. I printed it out. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're on your homework already. Oh, my gosh.
Everybody ready to get started?
Yeah.
Turn your bikes on. Bring them right up to your face. Hey, the Haverty Grace Planning Commission meeting for August the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four will now come to order. And I will call the roll. Chairman Ford is present. Ed Guerono.
Present.
Warren Hartenstein is absent. Farhat Shah announced that she couldn't be here tonight. She's absent. Chip Police.
Here.
Janice Chan.
Here.
Councilwoman Shnegus.
Here.
Harry Miller.
Here.
We have a quorum. Okay. So the first item of business on our agenda tonight is for some, another presentation on the follow-up update by City Planner Diane Clare. And I will turn it right over to you.
Thank you very much and hello. Thank you for having me. I wanted to come in and give you an update on where we are with the edits to the, before a complete document. The comprehensive plan goes to city council. Today I provided the revisions to nine chapters to you through the Google Drive. And the following chapters are completed for your review and they include number one, chapter one visions and goals, chapter two land use, a whole city plan. Three, sustainable community. Four, municipal growth element. Five, relationship to the LSHG. Seven, economic development and tourism. Ten, historic and cultural resources. Eleven, transportation, focus on multimodalism, and thirteen, the housing element. You will see that any changes are highlighted in yellow for ease of review. Hopefully I got them all. I tried my best to capture them. So you don't have to go back and reread the whole document to see what the changes were. The preamble and the supporting resources are good as far as I'm concerned. I haven't gotten any comments to make changes for those. So I think they, they stand as they are. All of these revisions reflect changes to the chapters, the static chapters right now that live on the city's website. Under the link, the draft two thousand and twenty-four envision Haverty Grace now available. So these will, I'm trying to keep snapshots moving forward and then you guys can see as we move along the edits that are, that are taking place. Chapters yet to be sent, which I'm going to try to provide in the next two weeks. There are four yet to go, which include chapter six regulatory framework. Eight, the water resources element. Nine, sensitive areas, environmental protection, and chapter twelve, community facilities. Just so you know, a couple of things I am trying to do now that we have these individual chapters all completed. I'm trying to go back now and weave the chapters together to make it a unified whole. To do that, I'm trying to make the format for all chapters consistent. It was a criticism of the Maryland Department of Planning and a criticism of mine as well. That sometimes the actions and the visions and the goals were scrambled and in different locations. So I'm trying to make those all consistent. We had three writers and three distinct styles and also formatting styles. And I'm just trying to smooth that out so it reads as a consistent whole. I just provided, I hand out to you, you will see new vision statements. And what I'm trying to do to make the coordinated whole is at the beginning of each chapter after the intro, but just at the bottom of the intro. You will see a vision statement at the beginning of each chapter that tie in with the visions from chapter one. Tried to use the same language so that you can see within the document how that, those chapter one visions and goals all kind of connect with common themes. And the object is really to focus the energy of the reader to one broad task for each chapter and just kind of a, a big heading and a big idea. And tonight I'm providing you a composite of those visions that I've put together. That are those lead-in visions. And you can check them out and see if this works for you as, as heading visions. If it flows, if you can see that within the chapters of the document itself, that, that it reads a little bit better. Actions remain at the end unless it's a multi-topic chapter such as water resources or community facilities, where those chapters are so long, I'm going to bundle the actions at the end of each topic so you can see it. And see right away the actions related to those topics. For instance, water resources are like nine different, pretty weighty headings. And you don't want to wait till the end of the chapter to, to read all the actions at once. Number two, I'm also providing a land use supplement in here. It's not going to be part of the document. But I just wanted to show there were questions that came up with the densities that were described in the land use chapter and what that means. And actually, a year ago, July in two thousand and twenty-three, we ended up kind of running scenarios to see if the land use intensities matched up to the actual build-out related to density, gross density and net density. So you'll see in the, in the online materials, there will be this land use supplement that's noted as chapter two, like chapter two A, it relates to the land use. Again, it's not going to be part of the document. It's more of an exercise just so you can see how those densities that are described actually kind of shaped out, shake out in reality. It's illustrative, it's illustrative. And those ranges actually were first described in the nineteen ninety-six plan. And they were, they were carried forward in a generalized way. So it was very interesting to, to assign land use categories to that. And then actually see it, see it unfold with those, with those densities. And they're pretty close. So that's available for you. One of the big things as far as the comments and one of the biggest challenges is that this plan is not and cannot be exhaustive. It is a snapshot in time and it leads you to other technical documents that are constantly being reassessed. And for instance, the GHD study for water distribution is a perfect example. It's dynamic and I point to the two thousand and twenty-one study and we actually use that in, as a supplement in the supporting resources. Because it was a formal, technical, formal report. They're, they're ongoing information that continues. The city's constantly working on the water distribution refinement. And those documents can be accessed, but I don't want to drop them into the plan. They're more like technical memos as opposed to a really good, solid report that creates the foundation and we're working from there to refine. Another example is the Susquehanna River Rail Bridge project where it's not our project and not all the material is public. Especially while it's being designed and even after it's designed, some of that material won't be public. But there is a good presentation that's provided on the city website from February fifth. If anybody wants to see the presentation materials from the Amtrak bridge project and what they provided. I did add some images and things like that and it's, again, we're trying to do broad topics of things that are really relevant and going on in Haverty Grace, but we can't necessarily get as, as into the weeds as we'd like to on all of that stuff. But I'll provide any information that I can and if you see it needs to be bolstered further, I'll do my best. But there are some limitations for the design material that I even have. And that's specific to the transportation chapter. If you would, please check out the nine chapters that were placed in the Google Drive for the Planning Commission this evening. It's August fifteenth, agenda material. I'll probably keep adding to that and I thank Eric for keeping us straight on all the Google Drive materials and all the, the materials that he always is, is keeping organized for us. So if that's okay and acceptable, I'll just keep adding them, the, the, the new chapters as I, as I can release them to that, to that drive. And at the end of the day, we'll be putting, if, if you like all the improvements, we'll be making it, we'll take out the highlights and, and submit it as a formal document. So thank you very much for your continued time on this. And I will be placing the last four chapters as I can for your continued review. And, and as soon as you're comfortable with it, we'll keep rolling with it, but I, and I don't know if I can just keep receiving comments individually from you. Just to keep, keep it flowing. If this still doesn't strengthen these chapters enough, let me know. I'll do my best. So I did not end up doing those call-outs of, like those looking forward, those big items. I found it's very difficult with all of the moving material to actually make another layer of those types of projects. So you'll see I did not do that. It's, it's really hard to figure out how to make that work and keep the flow going. So. Anyway, anybody have any comments? I hope I'm, I hope you got a chance to maybe see it a little bit.
I wanted to say that yes, I did have a chance to look at them. Thank you for sending them over and highlighting. I actually read each one and
Awesome.
I like the visions and the goals and the actions that you had placed in there. And I like the comprehensive plan, twenty-two story map quotes that you put in from people that submitted information. That was, you know, encouraging. I read the action for the transportation and I like about the Route forty, increasing the bus extension of local bus services to the newer neighborhoods on the west side to serve the entirety of the community. I thought that that was a great action for our transportation needs. I liked how you added the Amtrak pier, the Remnant Pier work. That's fresh documentation, July two thousand and twenty-four. So that's great to see as well as the multimodal options with the Greenway Farms and the, we have a lot already going on with, you know, people concerned, et cetera. So that's great to have that addition. And the term re-imaging Route forty, you know, helps people kind of have a vision and, you know, see that there's hope for, you know, changing it.
I love that graphic. That graphic was Maury texted entirely. Yeah.
Very nice. The graphics were great. I saw that in the, the quote that you put in for the affordability of housing came from state information. So that's good to have that there because it kind of brings us collectively as, you know, a whole state, county and minded, even though it's, you know, viewed for our city, it kind of helps us see the perspective of, you know, Maryland as a whole.
That was Tim, that was Tim Boursier. So he made all the edits there. And I'm not sure whether the Maryland Department of Planning will be happy yet with this chapter. And we might have to take another stab at it separately as far as housing is its own animal and it's very prescriptive. And we just don't have the ability to analyze to the degree that they want us to. So, so we might have to just move forward with it as it is and then take another stab at it separately to not hold up this whole document. So. But anyway.
That's understandable. But yes, good job and thank you for sharing that.
And you'll be seeing it again as council. So, so anyway, thank you for your comments. Glad you got a chance to look at it. That's great.
Diane.
Yep.
Can you get, give us your best update on the schedule of this process? In other words, when, when do you expect what to happen?
That, I have not gotten into the weeds on that because I've been so busy trying to just finish it. But, and I will, I will get back with you on that because we need to lay out the schedule. The final edits for the last four chapters, I'd like to get out by the end of August. And then having you bless it in some form, I'm not sure if that can, if that needs to be done through another meeting or if you're getting to the point where you're comfortable enough with it. That it needs to be formally sent from you as Planning Commission Chair and the Planning Commission in general to the council as your document.
But aren't we, aren't we required to have a public hearing?
You will be. Yes.
Before we, before we bless it.
Ed, that's what I don't know and I'll have to research as far as the timing for public hearing here versus sending it to council. And then you having a public hearing and then council having a public hearing.
Right.
It's a, and I'm sorry I don't have those answers tonight.
It's okay. I just was trying to get some idea.
Yep.
Because, you know, looking, going back six or eight months ago, we were thinking that it might, we might be having our public hearing before the summer was out and then it would get to the council sometime this fall. And it sounds like it's, that's being pushed back a little bit.
I'm hoping to get it to council very soon. So as far as when you say fall, yes. I, I think everybody wants to see it forward. So. And that's where I don't know the formality of, I, I'm hoping that everybody's getting more comfortable with the way it's unfolding. So.
I just don't want it, I just don't want our final blessing to sneak up on us to a point where we haven't had adequate time to, to really be comfortable with it.
Right.
And, and you can't get so comfortable with it while it's still an ongoing
Understood.
Work of, work of art.
Well, and trying to get you as many chapters now and then on the heels, trying to get to the last chapter so you can see the complete,
Okay.
You know, the complete volume.
We're not pushing you, but it's just, we're just, I'm just trying to get an idea of when we are going to be expected to do what.
Right.
You know, that's all. But this is a terrific piece of work, I'll tell you.
Thank you.
Yeah, from getting to end. I mean, it's, it's something that we've never seen the likes of in this, in this city. Something of that quality.
They keep adding, I mean, Maryland Department of Planning keeps adding layers too as far as the requirements for these elements and the technical, technical aspects. And I know we won't hit the mark on all of it. Community facilities and parklands.
Sure.
I'm not sure we have the analysis capability for that. For instance, we lean on the county to a large degree for the parkland issues and, and maybe I need to bolster that language as well in this plan to, to make sure we're saying enough and making it meaningful enough. So if you can help me on those pieces, I'd be grateful. And, and then determining, you know, the ability to launch it and, and being done enough.
Yeah.
There's, there are more bites to the apple, but I'd like for our, our process to be wrapping out.
Certainly also appreciate all the resources the department has put into this thing. I mean, it's, it's, it's amazing.
It's a group effort. It was a huge group effort. I'm, I'm grateful.
Anybody?
I had a couple
Sure.
Comments. I'll echo the chairman. Thank you very much for all this hard work Diane and incorporating all the edits that you've done so far. It really is shaping up. Just a couple of quick comments on which you've submitted today. The density chart I think is really helpful. But again, it would be good to define on this chart what net means versus gross. And I think on the, the previous chart, two point sixteen, you did put in a note that said gross, I think does not include roads and other infrastructure.
Yeah. In the comp plan edits, I tried to answer that question as far as not including the roads, the stormwater management infrastructure, for instance. It's just taking the raw land versus net. So, and this was just kind of a snapshot to show gross versus net and how things have unfolded.
Net, what, what's gross, gross is the total acreage and net is less roads and infrastructure?
Yes, that's my understanding. I don't have Maury's complete methodology, but
Well, I think your other two point sixteen says the opposite. So that, I think you just want to double check that.
Say it again, on the page.
Chart two point sixteen, the old chart.
Okay.
It was confusing what gross meant. I think it says the opposite. So you just want to make sure those are consistent.
Okay.
And then the housing, I'll, I'll agree with you. I don't think the state will be totally happy with this. It's, it's a bit of a punt, to tell you the truth. And to, to put off, you know, the housing requirements, oh, it's a regional problem. I don't think that's quite the answer. So, but you do, if you read between the lines, it does identify opportunities to provide affordable housing in certain locations. So it, it does address it in some ways. And it doesn't mention at all, you know, the recent legislation. I, I don't think it still mentions HB five thirty-eight.
Okay.
Which, you know, imposes the mandate of affordable housing.
Right.
So that should at least be mentioned somewhere.
That's a hard topic to go into and try to define it quickly, like Cliff Notes to that and what it means. Because we don't quite know what it means, but that, that is fair in all of your comments.
Have a significant impact.
Yes.
And, you know, the, the comprehensive plan should at least acknowledge
Okay.
That that is out there.
I might be calling upon you for language.
Well, all right, I can.
As far as how, how to craft it, yeah, if that, if that works. I'll, I'll do my best and I, I do recognize that it is somewhat of a punt. So.
And I, I, I look forward to the other chapters. I appreciate your comments on parkland too. I don't think we've quite nailed that either.
Right.
And especially, you know, people might perceive in town, well, for, in chapter twelve, for instance, it says we have ninety-five point six acres of parkland. Where you're supposed to have thirty acres of parkland per thousand. So if you have fourteen thousand people, that's over, should be over four hundred.
Right.
And especially when you think about, people in town might think, oh, there's plenty of parks. But when you think about new development, maybe not so much.
No, and it's a weird mixed bag as far as the land, the, the parks and recreation plan and how they disperse. There, there are a lot of the purchasing behind parkland and active parkland in particular. And we're blessed down here with so much passive. We're up against Oakington Peninsula and fourteen hundred acres there and Susquehanna State Park and a lot of pocket parks and things like that. But no, the, recognizing the need for balance, but it's
Especially at a neighborhood level and in the new development areas. And, you know, we don't have, although we have a recreation set aside in our subdivision regulations, there, there's no quantity to that.
And it's in, okay.
Those are loopholes that need to be closed.
In the past, in an interesting way, just from a history standpoint, a lot of the park and open space requirements were built into the annexations. Bully Rock, for instance, was required to have twenty-five percent open space. The MOE has twenty-five percent open space as it is written now as a requirement. A lot of times it was built in that way. I think the green property was built in with a five acre. Which is not necessarily sufficient. which is not necessarily sufficient for the scale of the property or the, the project. And that's a personal opinion, that's not to be reflective on.
I share that opinion, yes.
So, so, so it's a mixed bag for, from that standpoint, but I, please send me language for bolstering, I'm happy for, for, happy to, to drop that in.
Okay.
That, that, that it, that it fits and, and meets the bill, so, go ahead.
It would seem to me that the thirty acres per thousand is a ridiculous amount as well in the other direction, okay?
Yes. Can you imagine four hundred and forty-four more acres of open space within Haverty Grace?
No, I, I, I think that's, I don't know where that came from, but that should be challenged if that's the case.
Those are sort of rules of thumb in the Parks and Rec world for how you plan open space for communities to meet adequacy, active space, ball fields and, and passive. It's an equation that's kind of just out there generally, and that's what sort of drives.
I think we should count a certain distance out into the water all along our shoreline as open space.
Active?
And just treat the city limits just like the, you know, the United States does.
Okay, reach out.
You know, have a, have a limit that reaches out maybe, I don't know, hundred feet, hundred yards.
Or the Oakington Peninsula problem.
And we'll just count that as open space.
Well, and I think passive open space, and I'm not an expert on that as far as the whole idea of the equations for passive open space versus active and how it's all described. So I'm sorry, I didn't mean, did I cut you off?
No, 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 and I, I bring it, I mean, yes, but a lot of these places you have to drive to. But if you live within a community, it's also, you know, there's also a ten-minute walk standard nationally. And that's, you know, and it doesn't have to be Oakington Peninsula Park in the middle of a subdivision, but there's that.
My remarks were a little bit tongue-in-cheek, but it, but also serious, because communities that don't have a waterfront, I mean, they feel hemmed in, and the open space is more important to them. When you have this open waterfront, it gives you the feeling of, of having a lot more open space in your community than, say, I don't know, Churchville or Bel Air, right? And so I, I think there really ought to be some credit given to that somehow, because it's, it's really big for us.
So just to add on to that, the whole, the thing with the open spaces is there's two aspects of it. There's the active open space, and then there's the passive open space. And then they, they break it down into three levels, they do state, they have local, neighborhood, and then they have like the state, and then they have the region. And then within each of those sections, you can only use, you have certain thresholds that you have to meet. You have to provide, a certain percentage of open space has to be at a neighborhood scale or it has to be accessible at a state scale or regional scale. And then even to go further than that is that you can break it down and say, well, we don't have a lot of public open space or active, but we have a lot of private active space, like we have ball fields that are owned by the, the schools or private gyms and such recreation facilities. Well, again, you break down that it says we're only allowed to use a certain percentage of those. Like, you could say the Susquehanna State Park qualifies, you know, our open space for the next a hundred years, but you can only use like ten percent of that. And it only qualifies, it only comes in at a certain, at the state level. So the idea is to make sure that whether you live near or far, that, you know, whether you want to have your kid walk local or get there, that they have active and passive accessibility to them, and it's afforded to them at all scales across the whole city. So that, you know, it's an equity and justice issue.
Sure.
And quality of life, right. I don't want to cut off comments, I do know we have a seven o'clock appointment across the hall for the
Because we got just a couple minutes, anybody else want to put one last thing while Diane's at podium?
I'll say, I love this, this is really smart, the way you did the addressing. And I love the idea of making a uniform plan.
Right.
Because having it mishwashed is just impossible to read.
Oh, yeah.
So this is going to be a lovely thing to see.
Yeah.
And this is just the narrative part, all of the polish and the, and the photographs all happen at the end after all of the, the language gets hammered out, council level as well, so, thank you.
So, thank you, everyone, and one last thing is, the comp plan did have a open house meeting per Maryland Land Use Articles, section three dash two oh three. Public hearing was held on June twentieth, so that criteria by the Planning Commission has been satisfied. Also, the next step would be to get your blessing on the whole comp plan as a whole. You can do that in one or two or both methods, you can draft a formal letter coming that you can all agree on, you can pen it and send it over to the mayor and council, you can vote on it, you can do a combination, one or the other, you can do both. And then they, the city council will host their own public workshop, public hearing, and then they, before they adopt it by resolution. But as far as we're concerned, we're going to send you the remaining chapters, and then you are welcome to bless it as you see fit. And then we'll send it on, and we punt it out to the mayor and council, then we'll move forward from there.
I think, I think, to make it, to formalize it from us, I think at some point after we've absorbed every last one of those things, that we should just not try to have a three-hour discussion, but just basically move to accept the comp plan as written, and take a vote, and then all I'll do is write a letter on city stationery to mayor and council immediately.
Perfect, that's fine, that satisfies it, yeah.
And then it'll be out of our hands.
Thanks for checking that out.
All right, and it's seven o'clock now, so we were going to reconvene in the small conference room. There's water bottles in there, if you need anything else, we're gonna get started promptly.
Does, does Volney need to close the meeting, is that, I don't know?
We're gonna adjourn to the other room right now?
Yep.
Okay, we will adjourn, I mean, we'll, we'll, what do you call it?
Recession.
Recession, the Planning Commission meeting, we'll meet back in here after we go across the hall.